Hi everyone and welcome to Only in San Jose, a podcast about demystifying and democratizing the process of civic participation in local government. Ground zero of systemic change. So, some updates. I learned some new tricks in sound editing. Big thanks for your patience as I figured this out and to all the people who took the time to share feedback with me. So hopefully this episode sounds a little bit better than the prior previous episodes. Okay, so in this episode, the Planning Commission Part Two, we are picking up where we left off in Episode Three and taking a deeper dive into the nuts and bolts of this particular commission. On this episode, we will be joined by the newly reappointed and current Chair of the Planning Commission, Mariel Caballero. Mariel earned her Bachelor's Degree in Political Science from Santa Clara University and a Master's Degree in Public Administration from the Golden Gate University. And most recently, she is an alumna of the John F. Kennedy School of Government and Executive Education at Harvard University. Mariel has worked in politics and public safety for over fifteen years, working in legislative issues related to education, international affairs, and public safety and justice, specifically the criminal justice system in juvenile justice issues. And she also holds a depth of public and nonprofit board experience. And without further ado...
Hi, my name is Mariel Caballero and I was born and raised in East San Jose. I'm currently the Deputy Director of Probation Administration for the County of Santa Clara. And I've been on the Planning Commission since October of 2019 and I was just reappointed last Thursday, or last Tuesday, to a full four-year term. I got involved in politics probably because of my mom and more so just really involved in social justice issues. My mom used to be a member of the Kiwanis Club and she was on the Board of the Housing Consortium at one point. And she's just always been really involved in our community and giving back and so she passed that on to me. So I've been involved in boards and commissions, nonprofit boards. I was on the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee for Eastside Neighborhood School District for four years. And I've always done a lot of community service. I was on the Board of the Latina Coalition. And recently, back in the summer of 2019, I was approached by several female friends who are in the nonprofit world and the government world, who were very upset by the lack of diversity on the Planning Commission and were really urging me to apply. And I'll be honest that when they first came to me, I kind of, I was really skeptical. I didn't think that I had enough knowledge about planning and land use to be on the Planning Commission. But the more I sat with it and I thought about it, I really realized that anyone can be on the Planning Commission and that we need all kinds of voices and perspectives and life experiences to shape what our city looks like moving forward. And so I did a lot of homework before my Planning Commission interview last October. I met with nonprofit leaders, with city leaders, I met with almost every member of the City Council. I met with the head of the Economic Development Office. I talked to building trades folks. I, you know, I just really looked at like what was the entire scope of what was going on with land use. I read the general plan. I did a lot of informational interviews and I really tried to prepare, to learn as much as I could about what it would be like to be on the Planning Commission, what were the issues that were coming before it and what was going to be important moving forward? If I was really going to jump into this and do it, you know, a hundred and ten percent. And so I was fortunate to be appointed. I think that both times, in October and just recently, I was appointed 10 to 1 by the City Council, which I think is...
That's good, yeah.
It was pretty amazing. I remember when I was sitting there during the first round, when we were able to sit in chambers and watching the other applicants apply, or I'm sorry, interview. It was a really long day, I think it was like four or six hours. And when they went to vote, I was like on my phone and I wasn't really like paying that much attention and a friend of mine kind of like hit me and she was like, "Oh my God." And I looked up and I was like, "10 to 1, that's crazy." But it was really exciting and I think that it just also spoke to all the background that I did and the research and the, you know, taking the time and putting in the effort to really meet with everybody and to learn. You know, to be able to answer the City Council's questions, but also to really learn about land use and planning in San Jose. And so that's sort of like how I just got to being on the Planning Commission. But I think, you know, my whole education and growing up in East San Jose and working in social justice issues, I work in criminal justice. And for the last fifteen years, I've been involved in juvenile justice reform work and really looking at where kids are who are involved in the juvenile justice system and most of them are in East San Jose or in Gilroy. And looking at what services are there, what education is available, you know, parks and recs activities and really just being at the forefront of bringing in lots of community-based organizations and after-school programs and mentoring programs and recognizing that like our communities have been underserved for so long. And so all that history with like social justice and criminal justice reform work really gives me a unique perspective on, you know, how San Jose has come to be how it is. You know, if you look at everything east of 101, a lot of that area was redlined and was, you know, geared towards minority residents, much higher density, lots of low-income housing, not always the best school districts. Although I went to public school and I thought I got a great education and I was really, really proud of my education, but I know that a lot of people struggle. And schools are not funded the same way depending on where you live, right?
Yeah.
And so because they're funded, zip code, because they're funded by property taxes. And so if you have a school that's in a lower-income area, you're going to have lower-funded schools. And so I think that kind of when you look at the totality of the work that I've done, even though for me it was a really big mental jump, after I made that mental jump, it made so much sense.
Yeah, and I, I know that when I was there for your first interview back in October 2019 that I 100% resonated with your lived and professional experiences much more than, you know, typically the Planning Commission is appointed with a lot of people who have either real estate development experience or land use or some other like lawyer type of experience. And not that that's bad, but clearly that only represents so many voices and so many perspectives and usually not the perspectives of the people who are living and are impacted by the way land is zoned and used in their neighborhood. And so can you talk maybe for listeners, just a little bit more in-depth of the, I guess, the connection of your criminal justice background and how it impacts your decisions and how you view like the Planning Commission?
Sure, so as I've mentioned, I grew up near Story and White Road and my family, you know, suffered from a lot of the same things that I see in my everyday work. You know, I, my family had addiction problems, domestic violence, mental health issues. And we were a pretty solidly middle-class family. You know, my mom and my dad were married, were high school sweethearts and they were married when they were in their mid twenties and I'm their only child. And they both were really, you know, they had good-paying jobs and they were able to buy a single-family home in East San Jose. And my mom always joked that she had two options to buy a house, one in Willow Blunt and one in East San Jose. And she picked the option that was closer to where she was working at the time, which was at a bank near East San Jose. And she jokes that she sometimes regrets that because, you know, obviously property values and housing is so much different in Willow Blunt than it is in East San Jose. And we've seen our community deteriorate, you know, the roads are not always paved and the parks aren't kept as nice and there's not as many trees and there's a lot of garbage unfortunately. Now, a lot of those things are being cleaned up and the City Council is doing particularly Megalina Carrasco and Maya Starzer and, you know, are doing a lot of work around that to make East San Jose nicer and more livable. But I guess back to your kind of original question, which was more of the connection between criminal justice and land use, is that, you know, when you're looking at the history of how these young people grew up and what they had available to them and where they live, where you live plays such a huge role in what you have available to you, what opportunities are there, right? What schools you get to go to, maybe if you're involved in sports or not, if you have access to a community center or to after-school programs at your local school, if your school has, you know, a good library system or all of that. And what I have found is that the young people who have less access to opportunity are the ones that end up in the criminal justice system and then eventually end up in the system as adults. And so for me, the connection between land use and criminal justice is that, you know, opportunity is where land use decisions meet the needs of the people, right? And so in areas like District Five and District Seven, where there's such high density, where there's low-income housing, there also has not traditionally been a ton of opportunity, whether that's economic opportunity, which also plays a huge role in criminal justice. You know, if, if there aren't a lot of good jobs around and there isn't a pathway to career-paying jobs or career-driven jobs, then it's really hard for people to think about what else is available to them. They're just not seeing beyond their bubble. And so for me, land use decisions are about making San Jose a vibrant, livable place for everybody, housing available at all levels, whether, you know, it's low-income all the way to middle and higher income, but housing that's available for everyone. And that that housing is also paired with open space, with access to services like libraries and, and community centers and schools, that it also has enough economic development so that there are jobs, so that there's, everything's in a balance, right? And so it's not just housing with no services or it's, you know, just a bunch of single-family homes that are widely spaced apart and you have to drive everywhere. Because the other thing that we have to recognize is that most people in our communities in East San Jose, a lot of people take public transit and our public transit system isn't that great. One of the things that I have really been working on in the criminal justice system is ensuring that folks have access to services where they live so they don't have to spend two hours trying to get to mental health treatment or to substance use treatment or to, you know, tutoring or whatever it is that they need in order to help them rehabilitate. And so for me, the connection between criminal justice and land use is really that, that access to opportunity, right? And so when land use decisions are made in a vacuum, then oftentimes those opportunities are not there for communities.
Yeah, yeah, I can definitely see that. And I'm so appreciative to have somebody with your experience on the Planning Commission that's reflective of the needs of the community right now, which are exactly what you said, is like more services, not just for one zip code, but for, for everybody in San Jose. Because it is deeply impactful to kind of the outcome and quality and success of their lives. So the significance, I think, of the status quo of the Planning Commission now. And I know that the reappointments just happened recently. So can you talk a little bit more about some of the things that during, you know, COVID-19 and everything that's going on in the world, like how that will impact the Planning Commission and how, what things you're excited about in the Planning Commission in the upcoming term?
Sure, so I think that we're in a really interesting time in the Planning Commission right now. The current group of folks, there are actually four out of the seven members are brand-new to the Planning Commission, have never been on the Planning Commission before. They all have geographic and to a certain extent ethnic diversity. And you also have the Planning Commission being led by myself, Latina, and our Vice Chair Rolando Bonilla, Latino Mayo, who is, you know, so we're really at this like interesting period of transition and where we have an extremely diverse Planning Commission, where we have perspectives from lots of different geographic areas within the city. And I think that the things that I am most excited about are our ability to really push forward on affordable housing. And, you know, really looking at affordable housing in all of our areas, not just in District Three, Five, and Seven. You know, we've, we've been making some progress. One of the projects that I'm most proud of, of being able to recommend to move forward was in the Boston Hill area and was an affordable senior housing project, which had a huge amount of opposition from the community. And we were able to recommend that for, to move forward to the City Council last, last session, I think probably two or three months ago. And, you know, it's just, A, it was, it was a higher-density program project than is normal for that area. It's also targeted towards seniors, which we know we're losing a big chunk of our senior population because it's getting so expensive to live here. And it was going to be paired, it was a partnership with Catholic Charities and I, and a nonprofit housing organization that would also provide a wide array of services onsite. And that's the kind of, you know, housing that I'm really excited to see because it offers that great holistic approach to what communities need. You know, a place where we are ensuring that our seniors can stay in this community, where they often have lived for many, many years and have family, but that where they also have access to services that they might need as they grow older. So I'm hoping to see more things like that. We're also in the middle of the 2040 General Plan Amendment period. So we're looking at those decisions that were made four years ago to move the General Plan forward and what might be changing. And so some of that is looking at like your villages and, and the way that those have been designed and, and should be, might need to be changed. We're also looking at, again, looking at affordable housing and the rules around commercial requirements near affordable housing and changing some of those to make affordable housing easier to build. And we're looking at, you know, zoning of light and heavy industrial and really looking at the growth areas and if those growth areas still make sense. So that's all really exciting and the General Plan is really what are the guidelines by which the Planning Commission makes their decisions, right? So being able to look at some of the things, whether it's bike safety or transit hubs and the things that, you know, the Planning Commission has kind of been pushing but hasn't had the ability to make really affirmative recommendations because it's not part of the General Plan, is looking at how those things might change and shift as we move away from people driving to work because of COVID. Because now because of COVID, a lot of people were home, right? And so one of the conversations that we had at the last 2040 Task Course Meeting was about what is that going to look like for the General Plan moving forward? Are we going to start thinking about how we build for a community that doesn't drive as much? So does that mean that we need to, you know, think about the miles to transit in a little different way? Like, do we need to be closer? Do we need to have more transit hubs? What does that look like? So those are kind of the things I'm really excited about. Obviously, a huge one that's coming in this next year more than likely is Google, which is super controversial and a lot of folks are really worried about displacement. So that's coming forward. We also have several projects that are coming forward related to the Allen Rock area that I'm looking forward to seeing. I think one of the trends that I'm really excited about recently is that there's been a lot more engagement in community in the plan development. And, and most developers are really starting to take to heart those community recommendations and implementing them into their, their plans and their developments. And so that's exciting to see too, is, you know, that honoring the voice of community, which is so important.
Yes, yes, because it's their lived experiences that, that should physically shape the community as they are going to be living in it and impacted by those things.
Absolutely, yeah. They're, you know, the work that I do in the probation department, we really look at lived experience and not, government shouldn't tell people how to live their lives or what is safe or not safe. And in this context, I'm not talking about people who are on probation. I'm talking about like neighborhood safety and what is important and what should or shouldn't be funded. We do some participatory budgeting programming in the east side neighborhood of Valley Palms and in East Gilroy, that's really about prevention activities. And we don't come in as the probation department, working in these communities and say, "This is what safety means." We ask them, "What does safety mean to you?" And, you know, and then we help them achieve those goals. So for example, in East San Jose and in the Valley Palms neighborhood, you know, for them, I think when you come from an outsider's perspective, you're like, "Oh, everybody's really worried about gangs and drugs and crime." And when we asked the residents of Valley Palms, they said, "I don't have a safe way to get my kids to school because there's no crosswalk across Waverly Avenue. That's safety for me." And so we were able to work with them in the City Council to install a crosswalk. And like, so I think it's really about changing and shifting that mindset from developers coming in and saying, "This is what a great development looks like in your neighborhood," to hearing from residents and saying, "You know, we really want, you know, space for community events or we need more green space or we need more trees or we'd really like a bike shop here," or, you know, things like that. And not everything can be done, but a lot of things can be done and it's a great, great opportunity for collaboration. And I think it really offers a sense of goodwill and partnership and that those developers are actually part of the community and not trying to push community out.
Yeah, I agree with that. And I once was, I think, talking with a friend about, "I wish that there was some kind of performance review of design of the built environment, kind of like a Yelp review after the fact, that notes are like, 'Oh, this hallway doesn't have as many lights or this street needs more lights and like, I can't walk down this street as a senior citizen because there are no benches and trees for me to rest at,'" and things like that. The little details, you know, of a quality journey from point A to point B.
Yeah, it's really fascinating that you say that because I remember when Viva Caya started, I was really excited about this opportunity to ride on the streets without cars. And one of the first ones that we did was like going towards Willow Blunt. And I remember that ride being like really, you know, the streets were super wide and there were all these trees and it was a very pleasant ride. And then a couple, a year or two later, we did East San Jose and we went all the way down White Road. And I just remember it being super hot, there weren't enough trees, you know, there weren't places to stop and rest. It just didn't have the same feel. And that's what like built environment is so important, is you want these places to be welcoming, you want people to be out of their cars and walking. But if there's not enough bus stops and not enough trees or not enough places that are welcoming, people will only stay in their cars because they can't get out of them. And then those people who are forced to not be in their cars because they have to take public transit or because they have to ride their bikes are suffering because it's so hot and so unwelcoming. And it's really, it's just been, so kind of looking at it from that perspective, you start to really feel how the built environment is so different in these different neighborhoods. And, you know, the work that we do in Valley Palms, the neighbors were, told us that like the community didn't always feel safe because of the fact that there weren't enough lights, right? And so how do you, that's a fairly easy thing to address. And, and the property management there is working on that. But the same thing can be said for neighborhoods, right? Like how far apart, spaced apart are the, the streetlights? Where are the bus stops? You know, how often do those bus lines run? Those are all public services that, and land use plays a role in that because as you're looking at these plans, you find out, you know, there's, there's information about how far away the closest transit line is. There's information about how many cars are going to be driving into this neighborhood because of this new development. You know, there's information about parking, there's information about whether or not the development includes, you know, park space or gathering space on its property. Who maintains that, right? Is it a city, is it goes back to the city or is the property developer going to maintain that? And all of those things are part of the plan that comes before the Planning Commission.
Yes, and, and really an important part that I think, given when we talk about it in this context, it makes it much more relatable than when we're in the vernacular of like planning design talk. Because I was, I was there for both Viva Caya's. And for the second, I actually couldn't finish because it was so hot. And I didn't anticipate that because I don't bike down these streets because they're really scary if the cars are around. And so I was really excited to bike down these streets, but then I didn't bring enough water. And then when it came time for lunch, like we were deciding which food truck and food stop to go to by, does it have a tree? Because if it doesn't have shade, we're not going there. I was like with my friends, I was like, "I can't, I need shade." And so that, you know, that right there illustrates that if you don't have these like little amenities around it, you're not really setting up that business or this event up for success and how important like just shade plays into things.
Yeah, absolutely. Another thing that I remember is, so I'm a big napper. When I get the chance, not that I get to nap very often, but I remember being super tired after Viva Caya, both times, because like I'm not used to riding thirteen miles on my bike, like ever. So I came home and I took a nap and I remember it being so peaceful and quiet. I was still living in East San Jose at the time. And I woke up and I was like, "Oh my God, I haven't heard an ambulance go by. I haven't heard a police car go by. I haven't heard, you know, just generally cars going by because of White Road." And I, at the time, I lived only about four blocks away from White Road. So I had not realized how loud it was, just on a day-to-day basis because you become so desensitized to the noise that when the noise goes away, it's like, it literally took me probably a little while to figure out why it was so peaceful. And then I realized, "Oh, it's because there's no cars," right?
Yeah.
Which, you know, I think to most people, you're probably, you don't think about those things on a daily basis until they're taken away. And then you realize like, "Wow, this is what it feels like to live in other neighborhoods."
Yeah, well, I think sometimes people don't even realize how much our planning decisions revolve around the automobile. Like you can't have affordable housing or a new apartment complex because the neighbors are upset about the cars that are going to be coming in the neighborhood. And, you know, you can't have certain parks or things like that because they're concerned about the parking around the park. Even like libraries, parks, community center, like the first thing in most community engagement settings, the opposition is around cars. And so we can't have nice things because we have to make room for our cars.
Yeah, which is why it's, I will truly miss Shiloh Ballard, who was a Planning Commissioner, because she was such a big proponent for getting people out of their cars and onto bikes. And that is, it's a big piece for me. When I moved to Japantown, just, I moved two years ago and last December had the, my car lease was ending. And I had been trying to take public transit two or three times a week anyways and I made the decision to no longer have a car. And so that decision has really changed the way that I also look at land use decisions because now I'm a user of that public transit. I'm the one who has to figure out like how to get from point A to point B without a car and do all of the things. So when you're looking at, you know, what amenities are in community, you want to make sure that there's like a grocery store that's in walking distance. You want to make sure that there's, you know, dry cleaners, that there are restaurants and really moving, which is one of the reasons why I like the idea of urban villages, because of the fact that you have all of these neighborhoods serving businesses in, usually within walkable distance of, of, you know, the community. And I think that that really pushes us out of our cars and into the neighborhood. You know, I love living in Japantown because I can walk to, you know, two grocery stores, a slew of restaurants. I can walk to work, I can walk to Light Rail, I can ride my bike downtown, you know, and it's not that, that difficult. But, but people who live in East San Jose or in the west side or even in, you know, South San Jose, don't generally have that same ability because they don't, the neighborhoods were not developed around these core services. And so I think that's really the change that you're starting to see with this general plan, is moving away from that suburban feeling to these little urban centers. So not having a core downtown. So not having a core downtown, although we'll always have a core downtown, is, you know, that that those same services you could get downtown, you should be able to get within one to three miles of your home.
Yeah, basic services like having a grocery store with organic food or, you know, a farmer's market, something close by. And it's kind of what you mentioned about your nap and how you didn't notice until the cars were gone. It's kind of like you don't notice your quality of life, having these things at a walkable distance. And instead of being in your car all the time, you're actually walking to these places. I I lived in in District Five uh or Four, it's a capital in Barriessa. And I grew up on the east side and then more recently I'm I moved to uh Midtown in District Six because it was closer to my job. And then I started walking to work every single day for the last like three or four years. And so I walk about three to five miles a day. And and that became like my me time and like I just like hang out and say hi to my neighbors or local businesses. And I was able to walk to my dry cleaners and restaurants and the grocery store. And I've never grown up with that. And I did not know what I was missing out on.
Yeah, me neither. I mean, we had to walk, uh, we had to drive to go to the grocery store. Um, even school, like, I mean, I could walk to school, but it was a good mile. And um, you know, it's, I think that having that ability to, I, A, I think that uh uh as kids, you take it for granted. Um, because you don't, you're not really.
You take a lot for granted.
And you don't really realize how important it is until you're a girl, you know. Um, uh, when I was living in East San Jose, I had, there was a little elementary school in a park really close to where I lived. And so we were able to take our dogs um for walks most of the time, right? But um, that's not always the case in most neighborhoods. You usually have to go farther to find a public park. Um, so I think that what we're really starting to see and what I think the city is focused on is bringing all of those amenities closer to everyone who needs them. But that also means that you have to sort of change your priorities, right? You have to really um force people. So so one of the things that people are always upset about us, that set at us about it on the planning commission is the fact that um, there's never enough parking. Everybody's always saying there's never enough parking for any of the developments. But that's a strategic decision because the idea being that if you don't provide enough parking, people will have to be forced to choo- choose some other um mode of transportation. Now, not everyone will do that and some people will park where they shouldn't. Um, or where it's less desirable to have them park, but a lot of, but there's also been a lot of research that younger generations are using fewer cars, right? And and using car shares more. And I mean, if if we weren't, we wouldn't have Uber and Lyft and scooters and e-bikes. And all of the things that we have at our disposal now. And so the hope is that by making these shifts in what you're required to do for things like parking, that we're moving society along at a faster pace, right? So so we're already starting to see these changes happen generationally. And now we're gonna push society a little bit faster to get there um in a timeframe uh that works for for the land use decisions, right? And and for the community. And really the hope is, is that with more people working from home now and more people using car shares and um ride shares and uh scooters and e-bikes and public transit, that you'll see fewer bikes, uh fewer cars, but you'll also see a better impact on the environment, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so so it's all kind of related. And I think that that's the piece that um I hope that people understand about the planning commission is it's not just about deciding what building goes where. It's really looking at the whole holistic look of a city, right? Of um of a landscape and saying like, where are the things that we need most? Where do we want them to be? Um, where do we want people to live? Where do we want people to work? And how do all of those things um come together? So I think that that's been a really big, um, that's one of the things that I'm most excited about is is looking at things holistically. So like a lot of times I'll ask the planning commission staff, um, or the the planning staff, like what else is is planned for this neighborhood so that I have a better, I I like to look at the big picture. And so sometimes, um, one of the things that's difficult for me being on the planning commission is that we see properties um individually. Rather than like, they don't come like as a block because they come as they come, um, so people uh put their applications through the planning department and and sometimes it can take years for something to come to the planning commission, depending on how many steps and permits and all the things that need to happen, right? Um, and so you're seeing piece uh each piece as its own individual plan versus the whole holistic place. Now, the holistic piece is the general plan, right? Like which which generally guides what can go in what areas. But what I like to know, so Winchester Ranch was a great example. This was a few um months ago. I wanna say like maybe November, December timeframe, um, winter. Um, they, it came and that we were having a great discussion about whether or not, what, how many stories uh the new um complex should be. And there, it was a multi-family housing development. So there were gonna be townhomes, there was an apartment complex. And um, and obviously it was a mobile home park that was being converted to. So there were lots of different things going on within this this plan. Um, and one of the pieces was that right next to it, there was gonna be an office building. And um, there was conversation about whether or not the apartment complex was too tall. And so one of the questions that I asked was, well, how tall is the apartment complex gonna be? Because if the apartment complex is is in front of all of these townhomes that are theoretically only three to four stories high and this apartment complex is seven stories, like, is that gonna look really weird if there's a twelve-story tower in front of that? Right? And so you wanna look at it as a whole thing. And it turned out that the apartment complex and the the business um tower were gonna be the same size. So like that makes sense, right? So so you have this idea of um uh continuity. But also of having to look at everything holistically, of having to say like, what else is being developed? What else is planned? Even if it's not before you, that's what's great about having the planning staff is is that they often have the bigger picture because they're looking at all of the things as they come before them and they have the historical knowledge as well. So being new to the planning commission, that property, I think, had already come forward and there had already been a decision on that. But I wasn't there, so I didn't know what the decision was. So I get to ask them like, well, how big is that building gonna be? And and is it comparable to the building we're trying to build here?
And I think that's that's a great point and a great perspective that you bring to the planning commission because really in urban planning as a whole, there are no such thing, there's no such thing as an isolated decision. It's like all interconnected. And if you think about the bigger picture, you can make better decisions that amplify the community as a whole versus like just this one apartment complex.
Absolutely, yeah. And I think that that most of the planning commissioners, or at least um, I can't speak for the new ones because we've only had one meeting with them yet, but at least uh previously uh the planning commissioners were really interested in looking at those like holistic decisions. And really balancing the community need with the business need with just the general sort of what are, what do we want San Jose to look like in ten, fifteen, twenty, fifty years? Right? Because um, the decisions that we make um on the planning commission, whether or not to recommend a project with board for approval, those have implications for the next fifty years. You know, most of the time, those buildings will be around for quite some time. So we really, it it's something that I take super seriously. Um, I make sure to read. Um, one of the things that I think is really daunting about being on the planning commission is that it is a huge time commitment. Um, I would say, you know, the packets are anywhere from three hundred to a thousand pages. A lot of it is pictures of like what buildings will look like and landscaping and things. So it's not all packed, but you know, when you have an environmental impact report, that can be a hundred pages, a couple hundred pages, depending on what's going on. And you really do need to read all of the documents in order to have a great sense of what's going on. And one of the things that I have learned is that I have certain things that I really care about. I care about bikeability, I care about transit, I care about affordable housing, I care about generally green space, right? So I'm looking at those sections much more closely than maybe some of the other sections. Um, just because those are my passions, right? Whereas my other commissioners might be looking at those other sections. Um, some people want, are really interested in, you know, making sure that the building is physically pleasing. Um, and they wanna know that there's um, you know, a different difference in um how the the facade of the building is gonna look. They might want to ensure that like if the that neighborhood is, you know, let's say nineteen forty's craftsman style homes, that whatever's being built is fits into the neighborhood and it's not like a completely different style. So, you know, I mean, I care about those things too, but those aren't as high on my list. You know, I'm, I I I still look at everything holistically, but I think for me, um, when I'm reading the packets, I'm focused on very specific things. I'm focused on um, you know, parking ratios and like I said, affordability are my really big ones.
Well, it's just diversifying the modes of transportation. It shouldn't be like the only viable option to survive in a city is if you have a car because economically, that's not very fair and accessible to everybody. And um, I think definitely focusing on prioritizing um public transit and and bicycle lanes eh, and bringing that up more on par next to cars is just is better for everybody.
Yeah, um, one of the things that I'm really uh, I I promise, so I have fifteen years left before I retire. Which uh, and I joke that uh before I retire, it will be free in the county of Santa Clara for kids to take public transit. Because as as I was growing up, I took public transit everywhere, which is why I'm not afraid of it now. And I think that a lot of adults didn't grow up that way. Um, you know, I um grew up in a single family house, a single parent household. And my mom worked a lot. And so oftentimes I would have to go meet her at her work and she worked over in North San Jose. Um, and so I would take a bus and then Light Rail to meet her. Um, and I was, you know, fifteen, uh fourteen, fifteen when I started doing this. Um, and before that, I would take the bus to go to, you know, San Jose State or other places to take classes and um during the summers and stuff. And so I grew up really understanding how to use the transit system in San in San Jose. A lot of people don't do that anymore. Um, and so one of the things that I would love to see is us create a like kind of a much more transit-going um populace by making it free for young people.
And they will use it.
Yeah, and um, being able to have other ways of getting around, whether it's a bike or public transit is super important. And I I that is one of the reasons why it's so much on my mind as we're making planning decisions because I grew up not having access to a car. We couldn't afford it when I didn't get my driver's license, still was nineteen. And the only reason I did is because I had to commute to go to college, to go to Santa Clara University. And to take the bus would take like two hours, so.
Oh, it's so ridiculous.
Just not worth it, not worth it. Um, so, and now, like you mentioned, you know, being able to really take that time for yourself. Like as an adult who works in a super high-pressure, busy uh work environment, that, you know, twenty minutes that I walk to and from Light Rail every day is my time to listen to podcasts or talk to a bunch of friends or even just, you know, decompress from my day. Um, and I I love it. I, you know, I, for me, it's a luxury. For other people, it's a necessity. And I'm very, very much um cognizant of that. Like for me, this was a choice that I get to make. For many people, it is not a choice and it's their only mode of transportation, which means it should be world-class. Um, it should be a public right. And um, you know, one of the things um that I'm super excited to figure out how to do is is that government spends a huge amount of money buying bus passes for people, whether you're on CalWorks or you're on probation or you're a foster kid, like everybody gets a bus pass. And what if it was just free and all of that money that we spent to administer bus passes and to give tokens to young people instead just was part of what we paid ETA as part of a service? So I'm super excited about that idea. I haven't had, um, it was one of my goals. Um, last year I went to, uh, I did some executive education at Harvard Kennedy School of Government. And when I left, I was like, this is gonna be what I'm gonna work on this year. I'm gonna figure out how to make public transit free. And I even talked to my boss, I said, you know, I know this isn't really probation work that I'm super passionate about. Um, will you just give me the space to like figure this out? And she was really open to it. She loves the idea. You know, we spend um probably tens of thousands, if not a hundred thousand dollars a year of our budget on bus passes. And she was like, absolutely really cool. And then COVID happened. So that's been the last, you know, five months of my life has been uh dealing with the COVID response. But as that's why I said, before I retire, it will be free for any, for all young people. Um, and other places have done it. Uh, you know, Boston's done it. Um, some of the rural um counties in um Florida have done it because they've gotten rid of school buses. And you know, San Jose doesn't have a ton of school buses. I think we do have some, we still do have some. But um, if we created a a transit-going culture, people would have uh feel less connected to their cars and feel like they had to use them less.
Yes, I, well, I look forward to that future and partaking in that. And, okay, so, I mean, we can go on and on about transit and parking. But um, I wanted to also kind of just talk about, I know that your experience is is not, it wasn't a full term. But in what you have experienced, how would you advise the public and listeners who are interested in in participating in this process more? Like what is the best way for them to get involved without actually joining outright or applying for a planning commission seat? Because that's not everybody's cup of tea. But there are so many different ways that they can participate, either in public meetings or maybe by writing um one of the commissioners or um also like documents and and references and resources that you can point our listeners to who are, yeah, who wanna be more involved.
Sure. Um, so I would say, obviously, the best way to get involved is to listen and attend um planning commission meetings. Um, there is a public comment section where you can speak about anything that's not on the agenda. And then for every agenda item, uh, people can make comments. Um, we, we listen to everything, we read everything we get. You can email your planning commissioners. But I would also encourage folks to ensure that they follow up that email to, with an email to their city council person. Because one of the things that you have to remember is is that for most things, the planning commission isn't the last. Uh, the city council is. We're making recommendations to the city council. So um, while that public comment and that input is super important because it helps us formulate our recommendations to the city council, like you can't just stop with your public engagement there. You have to engage your city council people. And those city council people often very much listen to their constituents and and wanna know how these um things will impact them. So you can find um both um our public email addresses with any of the planning commissioners on um the city website as well as all of your city council people on the city website. And I would highly encourage folks to participate that way. One of the sort of both benefits and drawbacks of COVID is is that our meetings are no longer um at City Hall. Um, they're now being done via Zoom. And I think that that has actually allowed people to participate more who may not have been able to before because you can call in. Um, before, when you wanted to make a public comment, if you couldn't come to the meeting, you had to send us a letter and that was the only thing you could do. Now, if you can't physically, because we're not having public meetings, you can call and listen in and you're on mute until it's your turn to talk and then you can hang up and go and, you know, go about your business. Um, but you get an opportunity uh to watch us. Uh, it's also streamed live. Every meeting is streamed live. Um, whereas I don't think, they were not before um streamed.
And they're recorded too, right?
Yeah, and now they're recorded. Um, before, they were, need to stream more recorded, only the city council meetings were. Um, and so I think that now there's actually much more public access than there was before. There's still limitations. Obviously, you have to have access to a phone. Um, you, um, not everybody knows how to use Zoom. And so we do struggle sometimes with that. But the city clerk's office has uh workarounds for that. There's, you can call the city clerk's office and they'll call you back. And you know, and you can do public comment through the phone. Um, there's always a phone phone number to call into um if you don't have um a Zoom account or you can't just access it via uh Zoom because you don't have a computer or you don't have good internet. So um, I think that this has actually opened up public access and we're seeing a lot more people participate in each meeting. Um, comparatively, I think before you would only see people come to the meetings if there was a really, you know, controversial topic or something that other people really cared about, right? And so I think you're getting a lot more public engagement, which is great. Um, because, you know, these decisions shouldn't be made by the seven people who are sitting on that that board. We need to hear from the community. While we hopefully are a great representation of the city now, um, I wouldn't say that that was always the case, obviously. Um, and representation is so important. It's actually one of the other main factors um of why I applied. Um, there were no uh women of color at the time on.
And now you're chair.
And now, yeah, now I'm chair. And I'm the only woman of color as well. And we went from having four women on the commission to only having two, which is a bummer. Um, I'm I'm really disappointed about that. But, you know, we do have uh more geographic representation and every iteration of the planning commission, um, you know, there's a change.
They're improving.
Um, yeah, so I think we're we're headed in the right direction as far as representation. But um, the other reason why I thought it was so important for Rolando and I um to be appointed last round and now for us to serve as both chair and vice chair is because we have such deep roots to the east side of San Jose um that hasn't traditionally been represented on the planning commission. And so many decisions, I mean, it's, it's practically half of our city, you know?
Yeah. And a big tax base, by the way. There's lots of businesses on the east side.
And a huge, uh, you know, I, one of the things I love about East San Jose is uh, the entrepreneurialism. You know, you see all of these small businesses and I think the immigrant community is so entrepreneurial.
No, it's in there like ingrained.
Yeah, and they're so resilient and, you know, oftentimes have overcome so many things in order to be in this country and in order to create this vibrant community that is in the east side. And so to not have that acknowledged um, through either just personal knowledge of that community or from living there and by not having representation from that community, it it was a real disservice to the city. Um, because there are a lot of decisions that are being made um, coming up that are gonna impact East San Jose. But the, but all of the decisions that we make impact the city as a whole. Whether it's one, and I think that that's the piece that I would say if people walk away with anything is that, well, we represent now a district. We don't think about only the the parts of our neighborhood that are being developed. We think about the city as a whole and we're making decisions and recommendations related to the city as a whole. And so while for me, it's super important that I understand um, and and know about how folks live and work and commute in East San Jose and their challenges and their opportunities. I also think that it's super important for me to understand that about the city as a whole. And so when something does come up, I um, that in a neighborhood that I'm not familiar with, I try to familiarize myself with that. But that's where that public comment section is so important because I wanna know how this is impacting you. You know, I, if I don't live in your neighborhood, the only way I know how this is impacting you is if you tell me.
Yeah.
Right? Because, uh, you know, I can't visit every, I, every single site. I don't have. I do a lot of Google like maps and aerial views and satellite views of like areas when I'm trying, when I'm doing my research with the planning commission. But that doesn't have the same look and feel as living in that neighborhood. And we recognize that. So the part, public comment is so important so that you can share your perspective. So people have to understand that sometimes we are very constrained by the the general plan. And if the the project meets the guidelines of the general plan, then we generally have to approve it. Um, but what your public comment does is is that it also gives us the basis to sometimes ask for different things of the developer. Um, you know.
And it stays for the record.
Yeah, it stays for the record what your concerns are and why you may be opposed for um, or for a particular project. And that's really important, you know, um, uh, just like I said earlier, I don't think government should tell people um, what to do, what's safe or not safe.
It's the other way around.
I think, yeah, I think community needs to tell government how to make their communities safer, how to ensure that they have the services and things that they need in their communities in order for them to be vibrant, welcoming places to live. And so public comment is the number one way that you can do that. Um, and it's often low, uh.
Low hanging fruit.
Low in, yeah, low hanging fruit, low involvement. Like, you don't, you know, it's not like you have to come to every single meeting. You can just come to the meeting that you care about. Um, right? That has the the item. Um, and so that kind of, as far as resources, the city website um, is a great resource. Um, I definitely would go through Google first because uh, I think any government website.
Yes, it is.
To maneuver.
Though it did go through an improvement. It's a little bit better now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They just did a big overhaul and it's been great. But I do think that um, you know, if you, unless you're used to looking for the agenda items, it's just Google, if you say, you know, San Jose Planning Commission Agenda, it'll take you right to the page that you need at finder agendas. And all of our agendas are public. Um, all of the documents are public. You can look at, you can read everything that the council commission is reading. Nothing, we don't, um, all of the letters are also eventually made public, um, sometimes before the meeting, sometimes after. But like, nothing that comes to us is private. Like, we are a public servant, um, serving on a commission. And so we see the exact same thing that you see. You know, and um, so I was, you know, I think that any participatory, being participatory government requires you to participate.
Yeah. And it can't, it's not perfect by any means, but it definitely can't improve without our participation in it.
Absolutely. And everyone has a voice. Everyone who lives here um, should care about what's happening. If you, if you do care, then, you know, the, at least now you can care from the comfort of your home.
Yeah, no, totally.
Via Zoom. Yeah, you know, it is super low in uh, low cost to participate in in public.
But possibly very high returns.
Yes, exactly, exactly. Possibly, super high returns. I would say other things that would be resources is um, there's a, the general plan has its own webpage. So um, looking through that, there's an executive summary for every section that'll tell you kind of what each section entails. So there's a whole section on urban villages. There's a section on transit. There's a section on waterways. You know, um, all of that. And and while the general plan itself, I think, is like five hundred pages, I could be wrong about how long it is. It's pretty.
No, it's about, yeah. And it has a lot of addendums.
Yeah, uh, amendment, addendum. Um, yeah. So while the general plan itself is really long, if there's something that you're particularly interested in, um, I would definitely use that as a resource. There's also a lot of really great organizations that um, are involved in land use and development. Um, SPUR has a lot of white papers about, you know, proper um, sort of urban planning. Um, there's uh, yeah, there's just a lot of places that you can get information about land use and planning in San Jose. And so um.
And your neighborhood association too will have definitely some knowledge on that. I think like every neighborhood association and also people who are generally interested, just start like a, a book club on the general plan and like come together and, you know, over like Zoom happy hour over the general plan.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it kind of feels like the twenty forty task force is a little bit like, like our general playing book club because anyone can participate in that too. Um, so I think the last meeting there were like, I think there's like forty-five members. So it was really interesting uh, to do that via Zoom. It was the very first meeting they'd had since COVID. Um, and they did it via Zoom. It worked okay. I mean, I think that people didn't get as much opportunity to speak as they would have liked. But um, just with that many people, it's hard to to manage. So they're only taking one topic at a time, which is nice because then you get to dive deep into a particular topic. Um, yeah, so I I do think neighborhood associations are a great um, great resource. I know Allen Rock has an urban village association.
Yeah, Aruba.
That is, yeah, Aruba, that's really engaged and sends a lot of letters uh, to the planning commission and comes, um, organizes folks to come speak. Um, there's a, uh, Solos Mayfair does a lot of community organizing in East San Jose around, um, just around lots of issues. But definitely around development and particularly around Google, um, and around displacement um, for business, small businesses. Um, your small business associations, uh, you know, there's a Story Road Association, there's an Allen Rock Association. There's a general business, um, Chamber of Commerce are always gonna be interested in land use and development issues as it relates to business. So there's lots of places for people to get engaged. Um, and this is one of the areas where I think um, engagement is key. Because while we are seven people who represent, um, hopefully now more of the city than we used to. Um, you know, we're still only seven people and we have our own perspectives and we do bring our our life view into how we make those decisions. Um, and what we're recommending and what we care about. But that's just one perspective, right? Or seven perspectives in this case. And then the city council is the same, you know, they have, there are ten people, they are individuals. Um, and they do represent the city well. Um, eh, but they need to hear from the community. Nothing can change unless the community tells us it needs to change.
And and to build off of that and for one of our, our last questions is the importance of representation. And and we have talked about this before, about, you know, how I grew up in renting a room um, with my family before we were able to afford our own house. And a lot of the eh, the immigrant households in east side San Jose, they're multifamily and in some cases, and still today, multi-generational. And it's, it's not rea, it's really different. It's a different lived experience that is very valid and it should be represented in in the uh, planning commission. And they need to know about it because then there's no other way for them to find out that, you know, I I grew up with like a family of five at one point in a two-bedroom house before we were able to like get our own. And like, my dad rented a, a house with his friend, one of his best friends. And that's how I grew up. And it was also very vibrant and like a lot of fun because I had kids my own age.
Yeah, yeah, I do think um, one of the recommendations that um, um, Alex Schor from Catalina SSB made when we were talking about the changes to the planning commission composition was um, perhaps a member who's a renter. Um, or someone who um, sort of represents that community from multifamily unit housing. Um, which I think, you know, the housing commission has those smarts, like someone from a mobile home park, someone from a, who's a renter. Um, you know, and all of that. So um, I own a house and I'm a renter, so I do have that sort of experience. And I think that um, but, but I think that planning commissions would benefit from this sort of categorical um, uh, seat as well.
Yes.
You know, where you really bring a perspective that might not be there um, otherwise. So, yeah, I mean, it would be, I think that is such a unique um, lived experience. And also, it's becoming much more common.
Especially with renters.
Yeah, and you know, it's interesting when you, um, yeah, especially renters here. Um, whether you're renting an apartment or a single-family home or a townhouse or whatever it is you're renting. Like, it's just a whole different experience than owning your home and being able to do kind of whatever you want with it. Um, you know, within the guidelines of the city zone.
Yeah, and it's expensive and like I rent. And so there are sometimes where like, I'm not gonna put all this money into the backyard because it's not my house. And that is a very common narrative. And it's equated to like, oh, laziness, they don't take care of their things. It's like, that's not true.
Yeah, um, you know, the, the people who live next door to my mom, um, they rent and they have done a ton of stuff to the house. But it's true, they won't get their, you know, they're never gonna get their money back. Because they, y- you know, when they, when their um, homeowner sells, that money will go to the homeowner and not the renter. And so I think that for um, to have that perspective on the planning commission, especially as we are considering so many multifamily unit housings now, would be really important. And so I do hope that um, if the city moves forward with a charter change, which would add eleven members, that they'll also consider not just one from each district, but also some um, some seats that would be more categorical. You know, it would probably be great to have somebody involved in the construction trades who really understands, you know, that piece. Or uh, uh, you know, somebody from the development world. Um, while it's wonderful to have lawyers and we have. Uh, because they do, I mean, they, 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 the legal interpretations, it's really great to have that perspective. So, I mean, I'm, I'm not being facetious. I do think it's great to have lawyers on the commission. Um, especially as everything, they, these are all legal background.
Yeah, but they're more like facilitators and interpreters, you know?
Yeah, um, you also need people with those experiences. And you need people who represent um, sort of the everyday experience that our residents are living. And often, that has not been the case on the planning commission. It's definitely getting better though.
Yeah, and so I'm gonna call out, I think, a few categorical um, uh, lived experiences and professionals that I think definitely should be on the planning commission and should consider. And hopefully, like, if that, after they listen to this, they feel like spie, inspired. And feel free to add to it, but like, definitely, um, you know, teachers and and early education folks, as well as like the arts community. And um, we definitely need renters and seniors. I would love to have like a youth planning commissioner. Because they will definitely put like the heat on like climate and sustainability. And um, yeah, they're just, there needs to be so much more of a broad represent, uh, representation and perspective when you're designing essentially for the whole city.
Yeah, and when you're designing for a generation that um, you know, doesn't yet get votes, right? Um, or for the senior generation. So really funny, my mom is the chair, not funny, but not funny haha, but funny coincidental, is um, my mom is the chair of the senior commission for the city of San Jose. So she's always telling me about how senior things impact seniors. And oftentimes, she'll have um, opinions about particular planning um, things that she likes to bend my ear about. Um, which is great because, you know, I don't have that perspective per se. You know, I'm uh, but she, but she can give me that. And so I also think that there's a way that we could um, perhaps be better connected to the rest of the commissions that are within the city and maybe um, asking for input. Um, uh, from, you know, on particular things from like that, the senior commission or the youth commission or, you know, the arts commission. I think that there's a huge opportunity uh, with development and public art um, that I'm starting to see, which is awesome. Because I love to see public art out in San Jose. And I think that it's the, the movement towards more public art has been amazing in our city, but um, definitely has a long way to go.
Yeah, and we had like Peter Allen um, on the commission who was a big arts advocate. And then we had Shiloh Ballard, who was the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition. So those are great representations and we need to increase that.
There's also a lot more opportunity to get people to apply from different um, from, from different areas of the city through different professional associations. Um, but I think people are daunted by um, a, sometimes maybe feeling like I did, that they didn't have enough background and knowledge. And I wanna say that you can, you can get there. Um, staff is super helpful. Uh, the staff reports are extremely easy to read. Um, and if you have questions, they can, they're there to help answer questions. And um, so, so you don't need to have a background in land use and planning. You probably need to have a little bit of a passion for just the city.
Yeah, community planning.
Yeah, yeah.
And patience.
Yes, and definitely patience and you need to like, and you know, uh, and sometimes the meetings can be really long. Um, and so you, so you have to have stamina to a certain extent um, to be able to do that. But I don't think that there's any particular technical skill that one needs to serve on the planning commission. I think that any resident can do it if they are dedicated and um, and committed, right? Like, if they really take the time to read the packets and to understand and to ask questions. Um, and the way that I process information is by asking questions. I read a lot, um, the developers' questions. Like, that's a really fun opportunity uh, to be able to ask them like why they made the decisions that they made. Because sometimes there's, there's not always a good understanding of how we got to where we are with a particular plan just by reading the report or just by looking at their, their plan. Yeah, like you really need to engage.
You need a narrative, yeah.
Yeah, you need a narrative about like, what's the story behind this? Like, why did you decide to do this? Like, why did you make a decision to make it four stories instead of three stories or seven stories instead of twelve stories or whatever, right? There's like all these, there's all of these decisions that are made that we get the opportunity to ask about. That otherwise, um, you know, you're not gonna hear about. Um, because they just present you with a plan set and a report and you read it. And if you don't engage, then you're not really doing the full job of being a commissioner.
Yeah. So last question, and I know we're a little bit over, so thank you so much for your time. But so to, to share with folks who are considering possibly applying, you know, how should they prepare? Like, um, how much time did you take ahead of time to prepare? And the amount of, of time it actually takes to serve on the planning commission that people should plan for? And and be aware of, um, if they're interested in in partaking in this endeavor?
Um, from the point of which I was asked to apply because there was not um, female person of color representation. Um, which was, I would say, May of twenty nineteen. Um, and then I went to, to Boston for three weeks for a Harvard program. Um, and then when I, and right before I left, I had sent emails to all the city council people asking for meetings. So then um, the um, interview was supposed to happen, I wanna say, in July. And then they pushed it to September. From that period, I probably spent a good four hours a week prepping. Whether it was doing, meeting with city council members, reading documents, um, and it was over the course of several, like, three months. Um, so it was a big investment. But again, I came with very, like, just a basic understanding of government. And I shouldn't say basic, I work in government. I have a very good understanding of government. But a basic understanding of land use and and decision-making is what I was trying to say. Because it's not my area of expertise. So I really had to dig deep. Like, I had to do the research. I had to understand. I had to read the general plan. I had to meet with a lot of people. So for me, I think, and and when I do something and someone says, this is the way you do it, like, I generally follow the plan. So the plan was meet with as many people as possible, do a bunch of informational interviews, read all the documents you can read, go to some um, planning commission meetings. I would say it was at least four hours a week. Now, to be, you don't have to do all that. That's just, that's just what I chose to do. Um, and then to be um, an actual planning commissioner, um, so we meet every two weeks. Um, the packets come out the week before. It's at least, I would say, eighteen hours of work.
Okay.
Um, yeah, and I generally don't meet with folks um, who want to meet to talk about particular um, land use uh, projects. Um, it's just not my, A, I don't generally have a lot of extra free time to do that. Um, and B, I like to hear, like, I think anything that they wanna tell me, they can tell me publicly and not in a private meeting. So for the most part, um, I don't entertain requests to meet or speak before a meeting. Um.
That's a good rule. I, I'm, I'm with that. That's a good rule. I, I'm, I'm with that.
Yeah, like I, I, I just, I, because I work in government, I really feel transparency is important. And, and especially on the planning commission. So I don't, so I don't meet with folks beforehand. I let folks know that they're more than welcome to share information with me. They can email me anytime. I do read all my emails. I don't necessarily respond to them all. Because again, I don't engage with folks before the meeting. So I would say eight hours, eight to 10 hours to read the package. And then the meetings can be like, you know, they can be as short as an hour and a half or as long as four to six hours.
Okay. And I just want to reiterate that even though when you were starting out with kind of your education on land use, that you felt it might have not aligned with your experience, but it ended up playing and connecting to your lived experience a lot. So just to encourage people who don't have land use experience, you'd be really surprised at how much some of your lived experiences can tie into land use decisions.
Absolutely. And I think that that's what I, through my research, came to really realize. And, and I would say that the Harvard program played a bigger, really big role in my decision to apply. So it was an executive leadership program for state and local government. And I really, I was talking it over with some other folks, people of color who were in leadership positions in other states and cities across the nation. And thinking about whether or not, there's this great stat that is that, that in order to get women to run for office, you have, they have to be asked seven times. And this isn't really running for office. This is an appointed commission position. So it's not like I was elected. I didn't have to do a campaign. But it really resonated with me that I was, I, for whatever reason, didn't feel like I had the qualifications when I was first asked. And then the more that I thought about all of my lived experience and my work in government and my understanding of what is important in communities and what the struggles are and caring about the things that I care about, I realized that this would be a really good thing. So.
Yeah.
But I had to go through that process of really coming to terms with my own insecurity about my qualifications. Because I think as a society, women are told that they have to be over-prepared. Like you have to know everything to get that job. You have to be 110 times qualified to even apply. And, right? Like, and it's this crazy thing that like we believe as a society that like women don't take, don't always take that, that, that scary job and, and often think that they need to be over-prepared. And I will say that by the time I got the planning commission interview, I was over-prepared.
You, I enjoyed your interview the most because I was like, oh wow, she knows so much.
Yeah, but like, but the decision to, to put my name in the basket, I, I wasn't over-prepared. I just had to make a decision that I had something of value to give. And I think that so many people have something of value to give. And we just have to recognize that within ourselves.
Awesome. No, I think that is perfectly summing up the entire conversation and really during such an important time because the way that we knew life has completely been turned upside down. And it's not just San Jose, but it's like all over the world, all over the US. We're talking about how, how, what does the future look like, you know, next year, next couple of months? And everything is being reshaped. And if we're not part of that conversation, it's going to be reshaped without our consideration. And so now is definitely the time to, to do that. And also the next round of, people have like two to four years for the next term of planning commissioner. So there's plenty of time to kind of research and, and also just attend and, and get involved, but also ask questions. And I am going to link a bunch of resources in the, in this episode so that people can like click and explore. But yeah.
Yeah. And I think that one of the great resources is other planning commissioners, right? So I had the opportunity to speak with some of the planning commissioners before my interview and to just find out what, what it would really be like. And that was really helpful because, you know, it is a time commitment and you do have to make a decision to, to do it and to, to use your free time this way.
It's a public service.
Yeah, it's a public service. And one of the funny things, the mayor said to me when I approached him about it, he was like, but you already do so much and you're already so busy. Like, are you sure you want to do this too? And you know, it was a great, he's right. And I did. But you have to make that decision for yourself. Like, you know, I didn't feel like anyone forced me to do this. Someone suggested it and I hadn't really thought about it before. And then once I did, I was like, that is, that's something I want to do. I want to lend my voice because I think I have something of value and a perspective to bring that isn't already there that will help shape what the city looks like for the, for generations to come. And that's really important work.
Yes. It is really important work and it's very much needed. And I thank you for your service.
Thank you so much. And thanks for doing this podcast. It's fun. It was great to listen to some of the previous ones. I do have to go because I've got to get back to work, unfortunately. But this has been really great.
And I look forward to all of the great things that you're going to bring to San Jose as planning commissioner.
Thank you. And I saw you got, you were getting sworn in.
Oh yes, I did. I was, yeah, I was appointed to the council advisory or council appointment advisory commission. Cause I'm all into process and I definitely want to improve this process as a whole for people. And so I'm really excited to, to be part of that journey. Yeah.
Yeah. Years ago, I was on the diversity commission, which no longer exists because it's not legal. But at the time, I was really looking at how to diversify the members of the boards and commissions. So it's sort of funny that my like city commission service has kind of come for a circle as far as representation of being like on the diversity commission, trying to get more people from different districts, but also ethnic and gender diversity to now being, making the decision to be on the planning commission in order to ensure representation and diversity.
That's great. So we're, we're here for the cause, like you and I. We're both holding the torch. And we're going to have to pass it on. So the listeners, like, you know, there's, there's space. There's plenty of room for everybody here. Thank you, everyone. And that wraps up our show. And until next time.